Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held on April 11th, 2022, beginning here at 6:00 PM. First item is declared quorum, which we do have. Second item is the Pledge of Legions. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is a public forum. In Maryland, is anybody signed up to speak tonight? Okay. Item four are superintendent's recognitions. At this point, will the board please come in front of the dais? Our first item is recognition of Audrey Troop, Lamar Middle School track student. Two hundred mile dash, yeah.
Two hundred.
Meter, meter. Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know why I was saying that. But that would be something. Two hundred meter dash.
Two hundred meters, still something.
Yeah.
So Audrey Troop is a seventh grader of Lamar Middle School. And she currently has the fastest two hundred meter dash time out of all middle school girls in the state of Texas as a seventh grader. She ran in twenty-four point two seconds. She also competes in long jump, runs the hundred meter dash, and is the anchor lead of the four by two hundred meter relay. She has set the fastest one hundred meter dash time in our district with twelve point seven seconds and the fastest hundred meter dash time in Texas, barely beating hers with a time of twelve point five seconds. I'm exhausted just reading that. But you are a multi-sport athlete. You also play basketball, I'm sorry, volleyball and basketball and softball as well. So Audrey, on behalf of Temple ISD, congratulations on this accomplishment. We are so proud of you and we just can't wait to see what you do next. So congratulations.
I would like to introduce her mother, Camille, if you could please stand. So I'm going to set a precedent here that I've already been in trouble for. I'm not supposed to get, I know, I'm not supposed to give away things during this. So this will be the only time I do it, I promise. In 2007, I worked in a previous district in Copper's Cove. And right before the boys' track team went to state, that track team consisted of Robert Griffin and then everybody else. Right before they went to state, I handed out these gold track wings. Well, sure enough, they came back, wasn't because of that, and they won state. And so I wanted to give you one because even though you're not in high school, you are still a state champion. So congratulations to you, and we are so proud of you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now, one of the drawbacks is you get to take a picture with all of them. Camille, would you like to come up here and stand next to your daughter?
Yes.
Very proud of you. I know there's a lot of hard work with that. Congratulations on it. Congratulations. Item B is recognition of Julie Garza, Texas Society Daughters of the American Revolution.
Temple High School teacher Julie Garza has been recognized as one of the top American history teachers in the state of Texas by the Texas Society Daughters of the American Revolution. Garza was recently awarded second place statewide honors by the organization. Julie teaches dual-credit U.S. History at Temple High School and is in her seventeenth year of teaching that subject. She was first named Outstanding Teacher of American History by the Betty Martin Chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution before advancing to the statewide competition where she did place second. Julie is in her twenty-third year overall at Temple High School. And in addition to teaching U.S. History, she also teaches psychology and sociology and serves as the study department lead teacher at Temple High School. So Julie, on behalf of Temple High School, our Temple High School, congratulations, and we are truly so very excited. Thank you for all of your work.
Do you want to introduce your parents or your family first?
If they want to come up, my mom is here, Nancy Besner. And my son, Alex, he's a freshman at Temple High. And my daughter, Maddie, who's sure. She's in seventh grade at Bonham.
And while they're coming up here, the thing I'll tell you about Julie is what's not, not just is she impressive in the fact that she has incredible content expertise, but she is one of those teachers that builds relationships outside of the classroom. She is everywhere. I mean, she's at every sporting event, she's at fine arts events, she truly gets to know her students outside of the classroom, and I think that's part of the reason they perform so well. So congratulations just for being a model teacher, not just history, but just a model teacher. Oh, there you go. See? So, well, congratulations. We are very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Item C is recognition for ASBO International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, COE, for the fiscal year 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
I am pleased to announce that Temple Independent School District was awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Association of School Business Officials International for this 2021 fiscal year, for the third consecutive year. By participating in this program, school districts demonstrate their commitment to financial transparency. Applicants submit an extensive portfolio application to be reviewed by a team of financial professionals and experts to provide feedback on all reporting. If the material meets requirements of the program, that document may also receive a certificate of excellence. And the district's participation in this process can facilitate bond writing and continued bond disclosure processes. So at this time, I would like to recognize Callan Beaton, our Chief Financial Officer, and Regina Rochelle, our Director of Finance, and thank you for all that you did to put this together, and Kent Boyd, who was also involved for the 2021 year. So we thank you for that as well, Kent. So thank you again for setting the bar so very high and providing this level of service for our community over and over again. So thank you so much.
Do I get to picture?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, it's the third year in a row. It's just, it's incredible, the amount of work y'all do, what this means to the district, you know, taking care of us financially, you know, it's just incredible, incredible. A lot of hard work. So thank y'all very much. Would y'all like to say something?
Well, out of the two of us, I'm probably the one that needs to speak up. I just, I would like to, first of all, convey my thanks to Regina. She really does, there is a ton of work that's involved in making this presentation. There's information that's not only school district information, but she has to gather a lot of information from other entities outside of the district as well. And so she spends a lot of time doing that. So I really, really appreciate her effort on all of that. So thank you.
You too, Callan. That's it for the recognitions. Unless you absolutely want to say it, you're welcome to leave your card recognition. We have to decide your presentation. I think Coach Stewart's later, me and Jim. Oh, before we move on, just want to welcome chief, Temple Chief Sean Reynolds here. Good to see you, chief. Yeah, thanks for coming.
Everything's okay, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, that's good. Item five is executive hires, and I don't believe we have anything tonight. Okay. Item six is the Board President's Report. A, Announcement of School Board Training Credits. This, and these credits are from April 1st, 2021, through April 11th, 2022. Under State Board of Education Rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation expectation of any sitting board member. As Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who, as of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the Board, has completed the required education training, continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. There are seven training areas for board members' continuing education. One, local district orientation. Two, orientation to the Texas Education Code. Three, post legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Four, team building. Five, additional continuing education. Six, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. And seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. Local district orientation. We've had no new members that were required to complete local district orientation training for this time period. And orientation to the Texas Education Code, same thing, is we do not have any, no new members. Post legislative update to the Texas Education Code. The following board members, Lanell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gowan, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, and Sandhya Sanhie, have completed the required post legislative update to the Texas Education Code on September 9th, 2021. Virginia Suarez completed the training on September 28th, 2021. Team building. The following board members, Lanell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gowan, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhie, Virginia Suarez, and Dr. Bobby Ott, have completed the required team building training on August 11th, 2021, earning three hours each. Evaluating Student Academic Performance and Setting Goals. Shannon Gowan received her training on January 29th, 2022. The remaining board members, Lanell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhie, Virginia Suarez, and Dr. Bobby Ott, have completed the required biannual training on evaluating student academic performance and setting goals on April 7th, 2022, earning three hours each. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. This training must be required every two years and be scheduled for the 2022-2023 school year. Board members last received training during the 2020-2021 school year. Cybersecurity. The following board members, Lanell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gowan, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhie, and Virginia Suarez, have completed the required cybersecurity training on September 9th, 2021, earning one hour each. Additional continuing education, ten hours for first-year members, five hours for subsequent years. The following board members have completed the continuing education requirements. Lanell Davis exceeded and earned thirteen point seven five hours. Ronnie Gaines earned five hours. Shannon Gowan exceeded and earned sixteen hours. Shannon Myers exceeded and earned twenty-five point five oh hours. Dan Posey exceeded and earned eleven point seven five hours. Sandhya Sanhie exceeded and earned twenty-three point twenty-five hours. Virginia Suarez earned five hours. All right. Item B is discussion to submit resolutions to TASB's 2022 through 2024 advocacy agenda. And members, you've had this in the board packets, the letter from TASB requiring, asking for any type of legislative resolutions to be submitted. The deadline for this is June 15th. So our June 13th board meeting would be the last meeting we could submit a resolution if we desired. So if you do have an interest in drafting and suggestion of resolution, please contact myself or Dr. Ott, and we'll get that worked up for the agenda. Also, too, something to think about, the state meeting is September 24th, 2022, and we'll need to elect, appoint, delegate, and alternate to attend that meeting. So at the May meeting, we can decide on that. So give the members a chance to decide if they would like to do that or not, and we can discuss it at that point. Also, too, I think we talked in the past, if possible, all of our board members and Dr. Ott attending the September meeting. If that, if y'all have an interest in that, you could go ahead and look at your calendar, see if that's possible. And I think, and I can't remember, it's, actually, it's in San Antonio this year. Yeah, it's in the letter. So, and on the back, there's advocacy resolution, there is a form how to submit that, so we can work on that if that's your desire. Okay. Item C is the TASB Annual Spring Board Workshop, Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, from 4:30 to 9:15 PM at the ESC Region 12 in Waco. Registration is required, so if you decide to do that, please see Marilyn, and she'll get you registered. Okay? Item D is future items discussion. Anything you wish to discuss at a future board meeting? Okay. And E is important dates. Dr. Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. If I can draw your attention to the important dates in the packet. I'll start with this Wednesday. Kennedy Powell had a read-a-thon, and that event just concluded, I think they raised, what, six thousand, close to $7,000? It's just truly incredible. But they have an author coming, Deion Leonard, that will be coming to, with his dog, will be coming to present to the students and talk about his book and do a book signing, and that's at 2:00 PM, if you have a chance to go in the library. Thursday is Little Wildcat Relays. All elementary campuses compete, and that is a fun day. If you have the opportunity to get out there to the track Thursday, I think it's 8:30 is when it starts. It's in your packet, it is 8:30. That's a lot of fun. If you do show up, do not wear an elementary campus shirt, because the other seven will give you a hard time. You need, you know, they will, they will, yes, you absolutely have to be neutral. Friday, we have a student and staff holiday, it's Good Friday. And then April 25th through the 29th, we have early voting here at the Administration Building from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. April 27th, we have our Wildcat Mentors End of Year Event, and I appreciate those of you that are mentors. In fact, Chief Reynolds is a mentor himself, and I appreciate that. That's a fun event to attend. We also, that same day, have a School Board Policy Committee meeting, and then the next day, two events. We have a Facilities Committee meeting on the 28th, and we also have the TISD Ready-to-Work Hiring Event. That is over in the CTE, part of Temple High School, and that's for our seniors that are eligible for hire. We have a lot of different businesses that come in, and they interview on the spot. It's a great opportunity to come and watch our students get into the workforce. And then we have another holiday, it's a student holiday, Staff Work Day, April 29th. That is on a Friday, and we do have some plans to do some staff appreciation activities here at the Administration Building. And then May, here we go with the culminating events. We have a School Board meeting, May 9th, and then we have Temple High School's Top Ten Breakfast at the CTE. I guess it'd be the, what is that room called? I just forgot.
CLS.
CLS, thank you. That morning, and then that evening at 6:00 PM, we have a senior award ceremony. So it's time to get banquet out. That's what's going to happen. May 18th is the TISD Retirement Banquet, that's always a good time. That's at the Temple College Pavilion. And then the 28th of May, that is our 133rd THS Graduation Ceremony at Bell County Expo Center at 10:00 AM. You also have an addendum that has a list of all the remaining fine arts activities and dates that we have. They'll take you, I believe, through the beginning of May, May 5th, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is the consent items. The items are A through F2. What is the wish of the board to consider these items?
I make a motion to approve Consent Items 7A through F2 altogether.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Gowan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Item eight is action items. A, Human Resources. One, Consideration for Approval of Superintendent's Recommendations Regarding Employment and Contract Status of Administrative Professional Personnel. Dr. Ward.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Posey and the Board of Trustees. I bring to you today...
Members, are there any questions? This does require approval.
I move to approve the motion.
Motion by Ms. Gowan.
I second it.
Seconded by Dr. Sanhie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. B is curriculum instruction. No items. C is finance facilities. One, report on property tax collection activities. Mrs. Beaton.
Tonight, Matthew Jumper is here with us, McCurry, Veselka, Bragg, and Allen. I know Harvey Allen's been here with Matthew Jumper, and so he's going to talk to you about their efforts on the tax app and collecting property taxes.
Welcome, Matthew. Appreciate you coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the invitation from Posey, Dr. Ott, the rest of the members of the board. I'm with the law firm of McCurry, Veselka, Bragg, and Allen, and we had for many years through the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County been handling a little bit of tax collections for Temple ISD. Normally, you would have Harvey Allen standing here to give this report for you today. Mr. Allen's son is a senior in high school, and he's actually being inducted into Phi Beta Kappa chi today, and so I told him that I'd be coming in and report, but hopefully he will be back next year to get it to you. I think you've got a copy of our printed-out version of the report in your packet, and if we could flip to page three, which is the next page. This is a chart that shows the total revenue that Temple ISD received from tax collections. And when I look at this particular chart, I really think that this is the most important chart that you're going to have in the materials, because what this chart shows is really your cash flow. And what it does is it takes the amount of the adjusted levy, which is the amount of money that the school district was really entitled to collect if everybody had just paid their taxes on time last year, and it compares that number to the total amount of collections that occurred during the year. And you can see for 2020, the fiscal year that ended on June 30th of 2021, we collected over 100% of the taxes. And I always hate to give that statistic to a group in a room full of educators, because y'all are going to think I'm not educated that well, because how do you go ahead and collect more than 100% of the taxes? And there's a couple of different factors that allow us to do that. The first one is, it includes not just the 2020 tax year taxes that were collected, but also prior year taxes, which had gone delinquent that we continue to collect, and then it also goes ahead and it includes the penalty and interest that were paid on those late taxes, which also made its way into the school district. And looking at the chart, you can see that for 17, 18, 19, and 20, for every one of those years, we were at or over 100%. And what that means to y'all, the school board members, is that during the fiscal year, you all are bringing in the amount of money that you anticipated bringing in when you set your budget. And I will admit to you, I'm a little embarrassed that our 2019 number dropped down to 99.96, because we like to hit 100% or more every year, and I promise this will be the last time in every year we say this. That was for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2020, and so we lost our last two and a half, three months of collections when the world was shut down, or we'd have popped that up above 100% as well. I think that is the most important number, because that lets you know that you've got as much money as you're supposed to get. If you could flip to the next page.
I do have a question real quick. So I've heard that, you know, due to the pandemic, that these percentages are actually lower in many other districts or entities. Is that true? I mean, these are pretty high from, what do you see?
No, that wasn't really our experience.
Okay.
There was a period of time in the middle of 2020, you know, when COVID first hit and we went into lockdown, people really weren't going out and doing anything. And we saw for a period of three, four, or five months, the collections really, really dropped down pretty significantly. But as the world started to come back a little bit, we saw it pick up and almost make up for that time. And I think there were a couple of things that were going on. One, obviously, there was a fair amount of federal stimulus money, and so people had some extra dollars that they could use to pay off taxes and things like that. And the other thing was, because we were on lockdown, if you were fortunate enough to have a job or income that stayed relatively flat even during the lockdowns and all of that, your cost of living probably dropped down significantly. You weren't going out to eat as much, you weren't traveling, you weren't taking vacations. And so there was a period where it looked very, very poor, but I really felt like it covered quite quickly. And when you looked at the full year, it really ended up being pretty close to what it normally is. And the 2020s, you can see they're not quite as high as the 17s and 18s. I would blame that a little bit on the slowdowns of collections for a period of that, but I think for the most part, tax entities have gotten up the money that they were supposed to get.
Thank you.
So that was sort of the cash flow chart. The second thing that I think is really important when you look at the collection of taxes is, is everybody who is supposed to be paying their taxes ultimately having to pay what they owe. And the chart that's on page four of your packet, that's up on the screen now, it shows the last four years for the 2017 taxes, which were due on February 1st of 2018. By the end of 2021, the total amount that had been collected was 99.83% of those taxes. So 0.17% of the 2017 taxes remain unpaid at the end of last year. You can see, you know, the 18 taxes, we haven't had those quite as long, 99.77, and the 2020s that we've only had for about six months or so, 99.50. The overwhelming majority of those taxes were actually collected by the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. Those were people that just paid their taxes on time. There was 2%, 3% of that that went delinquent and was turned over to us in July, if you go to the next slide. And this slide sort of shows how our law firm did with the taxes that were turned over to us. And you can see for the 2017 taxes, that our firm has been working for 42 months, we've collected 86.79% of them. The 2020 taxes, the ones that have only been turned over to us for six months, we've already collected 66.32% of those taxes. We feel like those are pretty good numbers. We think that 66.32 is going to look like the 86.79 when we've had the chance to work it for another three years or so. If we go to the next chart, this shows you the total amount of the outstanding balance that's owed to the Temple Independent School District as of December... that's owed to the Temple Independent School District as of December 31st of last year. It is just over $1 million. The overwhelming majority of that are your 2019s and your 2020s. We're working on those. We got a bunch of them very quickly, but some of them do take a little bit more time to collect. And if you look at the pie chart at the bottom, you can see as those wedges get smaller, the older the taxes are, the more of them that we have collected. We go two pages up, you have that one. These collection numbers don't just happen. In order to make this happen, we have a staff of people. We've got three full-time employees working inside the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. And what they do is we mail out letters to people. We try to contact them and get them to pay. If that doesn't work, then we turn around and we file a lawsuit against them. We still don't get their attention, we'll go ahead and we will take judgment. Then we'll go ahead and post it for sale, and ultimately, we will sell it. Everybody's got their own breaking point. For the overwhelming majority of taxpayers of Temple ISD, that breaking point is when the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County sends them a bill. They just come in and pay it before the delinquency date. But some people need a little more encouragement, and there's a group of people out there that don't pay their taxes until the day before it's going to be posted on the courthouse steps. And you can see that over the last couple of years, we posted 128 properties for sale. We withdrew 88% of them because they paid or entered into payment plans, and we ended up selling 40 of those properties. And that's about right. We sent out 13,943 notices. The overwhelming majority of people pay. Those 40 properties that we sold, most of those are going to be vacant land, things that ended up being underwater. If people knew about it, they didn't pay their taxes on purpose. The next slide goes ahead. That shows our bankruptcy department. When a property owner files bankruptcy, we have lawyers who appear in bankruptcy court on behalf of Temple ISD to make sure that your taxes are collected. And that is also along with a whole suite of services that we provide. Most of them are the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. However, for Temple Independent School District, we do provide taxable value audit services and also property value study services at no additional charge behind our collection fee. And the best part about our collection fee is that none of it comes out of the budget of the Temple Independent School District. It's an added-on penalty. And so the people who pay for our services and all the add-on services that we do, those are the people who make our services necessary, because they're the ones who don't pay their taxes on time. That, I can answer any questions that y'all have.
Yeah. First, any members, any questions? All right, Dr. Ott, if you have some?
Callan, just remind me, 98%? Is that the assumption we use when we build the budget on collections?
98 or 98 and a half.
Okay. So just to remind the Board that, you know, when we build a budget in terms of revenue and, you know, we take a conservative approach of, and you see the collections rate is higher than that, but that's the reason we do that. So 98 and a half, 98. So, and I do want to thank you and your firm for supporting TISD. And I know this is, this is not a fun process. I know that. There's not a long line. But we are very grateful for your service. It allows us to do the things that we need to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are honored to partner with y'all and really appreciate the partnership that we have with you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item D is student services. No items. Actually, I'm sorry. There is. Yeah, student services. Flip the next page. Big one. One.
Thanks for coming, Coach.
Yes.
Yeah.
One, athletic department update. Coach Stewart and Coach LeBanc. Thanks for coming.
Just a little quicker.
And while the, while both coaches set up, I just want to remind the Board, this is part of a rotation we do. I guess it's every three years, two years, thank you, where we have athletics. Basically, our performance programs, fine arts, we'll give an overview of what's going on, stats and so forth, advanced academics, and CTE career tech. So it is athletics turned in the rotation, and we appreciate both you being here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Coach LeBlanc. Members, any questions? I just want to say thank you for your leadership, Coach LeBlanc, Coach Stewart. You know, athletics is such an important part of a student's life, and I think we have a lot to offer here, and we're doing the right thing in Temple. And it's good to have this report. Yeah, enjoyed it, enjoyed presentation. Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for what y'all do and all the coaches and staff. Thank you. E is Board Committee Reports. One, Facility Committee's Update. Meeting held March 31st, 2022, 4:00 PM. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Christine, I won't take too long.
I won't time you.
Okay. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 or 6:00 PM. It was a budget discussion. Ms. Vaden presented an overview of the budget and development process. Discussion represented the completion of the process to begin the previous retreat. She specifically discussed tax rates, influences, influences in the taxing increment, reinvestment zone. Item B, property sale and joint use of contract discussion. Mr. Boyd provided an update on the potential of the sale of Woodson and Emerson properties to the city and the development of joint use agreement for the track and field construction and operation near Travis. Administration presented a draft of the agreement due to committee members for input. Once completion, the administration will forward the proposed agreement to the city for consideration. Dixon Property Discussion. Should the district ever consider relinquishing the ownership of the Dixon property, the deed states that the portion of the property would be reverted back to the original guarantor. Legal counsel has recommended that the administration consider the contract in the Crockett Global Group for Property Investigation Services for the search for potential heirs. The committee concurred. HVAC Project Discussion. Administration will utilize the Esser funding for replacement of HVAC equipment at several campuses. Pricing, which was considered early in tonight's meeting, although the work was originally planned for this summer, Mr. Wolf notified the committee that due to delivery times, the work would be pushed back to the summer of 2023. Additional future items for discussion. Administration is currently organizing elementary future furniture pilot room for the two campuses with the furniture from local vendors. Staff will analyze the offerings and recommend the future purchases. The city has approached the administration about the formation of an African-American church historical district. The Wheatley campus lies within the boundaries of the proposed designation. The proposed plan was enhanced the surrounding neighborhood. The administration supports this effort. Meeting was adjourned at 5:42 PM. The next meeting will be held in April, the 28th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Dr. Art, I think you have something to say?
Just a real quick reminder, I do know that the last time we talked, I believe we said that if you had any modifications or questions or revisions to the contracts that we shared that would go to the City of Temple, I think we gave till last Friday, but we're going to go ahead and extend that till this Friday. So, because I know, you know, one of them's pretty heavy, so please take the time to look at it. If you have any questions, you have our notes on it. Let us know. And then I'd say, you know, Friday by 5:00 o'clock, and then Monday, if we hadn't heard anything, or if we had, one way or the other, we'll run it through our attorneys one more time, and then we'll shoot it over to the city. Okay? Thanks.
All right, thanks. Item two is the Policy Committee Update. The meeting was held March 30th, 2022, at 4:00 PM. And the meeting was called to order at 4:06 PM. Callan Vaden, Chief Financial Officer, handed out information on the bond election, INS tax rate, influencer, and the tax increment reinvestment zone. Committee discussed the budget revenue implications. A low attendance waiver for February 24th, 2022 was discussed. The waiver was part of the consent agenda at tonight's meeting. Board policy, DDA legal, and related federal and state law, as well as board policy and district procedures were discussed. Several policies were reviewed and were presented at tonight's meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 5:30 PM. And the next meeting will be held April 27th, 2022, at 4:00 PM. All right. Item B is policy review. One, FFFB legal, student welfare, crisis intervention. FFFB local, student welfare, crisis intervention. FFFBA legal, crisis intervention, trauma-informed care. FFFBA local, crisis intervention, trauma-informed care. FFC legal, student welfare, student support services. FFD legal, student welfare, student insurance. GKE legal, community relations, business, civic, and youth groups. And GKE local, community relations, businesses, civic, and youth groups. Mr. Alkenberg, thank you. GKE Legal Community Relations Business Civic and Youth Groups. And GKE Local Community Relations Businesses Civic and Youth Groups. Mr. Alkenberg, thank you. All right, members, any questions? Thanks, Eric. Appreciate the complete review. Yeah, thank you. With that, that is the end of our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.